Ready. Good to go. Welcome, everyone. I like to call this meeting to order June on June eighth, twenty twenty two for the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee. My name is Kenny Harris, the Vice Chair of the Committee and the Representative for District Seven, Representative Prince George County Board of Education. I'd like to take a moment. We've got a special guest with us here tonight. Board Member Judy Mickens Murray is sitting in with us tonight. So thank you for, thank you for joining us. Just wanted to acknowledge you. I thank everyone for being here tonight as well. Ms. Ellis, if you're still all right with it, I can actually call the rule. And you just, is that, that okay with you still? Okay, so go down the list here. And nobody will put a board member, Madam LaSalle, LaSalle Fraser.
Present.
Dr. Juanita Miller.
Present.
Board Member David Murray. Absent and Kenneth Harris, present. See. All right. So moving on to one point three, may I have a motion to adopt the June eighth, twenty twenty two meeting agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. May I have a second? I guess I can second. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, the agenda is adopted. Next, one point four, the approval of the May eighteenth, twenty twenty two meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the May eighteenth meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Very good. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppositions? All right. The minutes are approved. This week we have no public comments, so move right along to item three point oh. Or the third quarter internal audit report. In the absence of our internal audit director, Ms. Winston, please welcome Ms. Janice Walter Simple, who will first introduce herself and then present the third quarter internal audit report. Turn the floor over to you.
Is she on mute?
I, no, I'm not.
No, she's, her mic's just down a little low.
Alice, are you gonna share the screen or do I share the screen?
I'm trying to share the screen right now.
Well, can we wait one minute for Ms. Ellis to share this screen, please?
Yeah, sure thing. Take your time.
I don't know what's going on.
In the meantime, I think I can introduce myself. My name is Janice Walters Simple. I am the internal audit supervisor and tonight I'm pleased to present to you on behalf of Mrs. Winston, the third quarter budget, the third quarter report, sorry, that's gonna show you the results of our activities here in this department. And so, this, this third quarter report is for the quarter ended March thirty one, twenty twenty two, and it reflects the accomplishments of the department in summary. So this quarter, this past quarter, we conducted audits and issued seventeen reports. We received a total of ninety seven hotline reports, and those reports that we received were either distributed or they are being investigated. We completed eight property inventory assessments, and that's of our computer and technology equipment. A total of over three point five million dollars in assets were subject to the audit activities previously stated. Okay, so far our hotline or ninety seven hotline, that complaints that we received, I just wanted to highlight the first four, and those first four represent approximately fifty percent of the, of all the hotline complaints, and those are in the categories of bullying and harassment, safety issues and sanitation, employee relations, and school and office management. Okay, we had three investigations this quarter. The, the quarter, when I say this quarter, I'm referring to the quarter we're reporting on, and that's the third quarter. The first one was on misuse of grant funds. We had an allegation, an investigation into an allegation that was forwarded to us by the Maryland Office of Inspector General for Education, and this was relative to questionable expenditures relating to grant funds. And this investigation found that the allegation was unsubstantiated. While we noted that grant funds were received, those funds were remitted to our grants financial office, and we found no evidence that any of the funds were used for unallowable activities as outlined in the description or the terms of the grant award. The next investigation was an undistributed cheer team apparel, and that we had another investigation, and this was received by our hotline, that the cheer team members did not receive items ordered, and this allegation was partially substantiated. The court acknowledged that funds were collected for cheer team apparel. However, evidence was not provided to substantiate that all of the items ordered, were ordered and delivered. And the third investigation was regarding a teacher with overlapping position, and this was another investigation that was forwarded to us by the state IG office. And this one, it stated that the, a teacher had another job that conflicted with her work hours, and we found this to be substantiated. There was confirmation that the teacher held a second position that's in another county, and it was further confirmed that the teacher performed her responsibilities for that second job during PGCPS work hours. Okay, during the third quarter, we had ten student activity fund audits that were completed, and those were two elementary schools, three middle, three high, and two specialty schools. And of these audits, the ten audits, we found six have had significant repeat findings. Those are the ones that I highlight. That's Chrome High School, Kettering Middle School, Kenmore Middle School, William Packer Elementary School, Uxen Hill High School, and Eleanor Roosevelt High School. And we completed personal operational audits. The first one was personally identifiable information. That was a follow-up audit. And we found, based on our follow-up, we found that twelve findings that were reported in two thousand and nineteen, when we had performed that audit, were partially implemented and not implemented during two thousand, the two thousand and nineteen audit. During this audit, we found that the status is that those findings or the recommendations for those findings rather were fully implemented. And however, we found that there were certain opportunities for improvement, and one in cybersecurity and phishing attack training where employees, we recommend training to encourage the enhancement of employees' knowledge on how to filter their emails to reduce phishing vulnerabilities. We also recommended mandatory issue of PGCPS computers with VPN to all employees for safe remote work. And the last for this, this section, we recommended security of school-based student records containing personally identifiable information. And management's response to these recommendations, the current recommendations or opportunities for improvement are pending. Okay, the next operational audit was school emergency procedures, where we conducted an operational audit of school emergency procedures to assess school emergency plan compliance, and administration was conducted pursuant to this twenty twenty two audit plan. So we found the results, we found that emergency plans for the school year twenty one, twenty two were either not properly prepared, not readily available, or had been submitted for review and approval to, or not submitted for review and approval to the Safety and Security Services Office. We also found that monetary emergency drills were not consistently conducted by building supervisors in certain locations. There were locations that were not equipped with the NOAA or the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration Hazard Radio in accordance with PGCPS's emergency plan requirements. And the last finding that we, we identified there was that regarding certification and training requirements, where staff certification for first aid training and other requirements were not always current, or they were not always completed. Management responded by concordant with the audit recommendation, and they have begun corrective actions. Okay, we have implemented a process in this department where, where we're not just having findings, but we are, are having the complete audit, but we're trying to implement the process where we can present management with items of concern or issues that we identified prior to audit so that management can proactively address the items. And in doing so, we have conducted two audits, two continuous audits, and these are conflict of interest financial disclosures. And this is where we performed an analysis and where we reviewed. We reviewed conflict of interest disclosure forms based on the policy requirement, the board policy requirement for all one oh seven ethics compliance. And we found that some of the disclosures were delinquently received, some were incomplete, or some were not received at all, and it was noted that some improvement was needed, and the Office of General Counsel was receptive to the results and responded that controls over the process will be strengthened. Okay, the next continuous audit that we performed was on great changes, and we performed an analysis of great changes for the first quarter for the current school year. And in doing so, we, our objective was to analyze the, whether the great changes were comply, were performed in compliance with the requirements of AP fifty one sixteen. And we noted the following results, that great changes weren't approved late, great changes were requested late, or that great changes were entered late. And it was noted that some improvement was needed in this area, and the chief of school support and leadership was very receptive to the results of this audit, continuous audit rather, and provided an appropriate response. Okay, now for our property assessments, we completed eight of these in the third quarter, where the principals for the schools, where the assets were reviewed, what, and the CIO provided action plan responses. And we looked at these eight schools, the total unlocated items were one thousand one hundred ninety five with a cost value of two hundred and fifty six thousand five seventy five and forty four cents, but a depreciated value of twenty six thousand one hundred and thirty nine dollars and forty three cents. Okay, for our operational audits, the status of our audit plan is reflected here on this screen, and it's showing that our audit recommendations have been issued, and the reports have been completed for all but one audit, and that's risk assessment, that's significant, also significantly completed. And that one is at ninety percent, but all other operational audits noted have been completed. And that brings us to the end of our report, and we thank you for your attention to the activities of our department.
Thank you, Ms. Walter. Simple. I'd like to open the floor up to colleagues who might have questions about the internal audit report for the third quarter. Any questions from my colleagues? I can go first if you'd like me to. I'll open it up to y'all. Okay, so hearing nothing initially, um, can you go back to slide seven for me, Ms. Stiles? Sorry, so on slide seven, when we get there, the, the top one dealing with PII or person, personally identifiable information, when was this audit was completed in third quarter, and it contains, did the slippage that occurred contain both staff and student information? Or was it just one over the other?
So I, I think I, I may not be able to answer this accurately, but I'd attempt. If the, there was an audit that was performed way back in, I think it was two thousand and nineteen, and that was where there, there were some files that were transferred with information, and I think it included both student and, and staff information, some information was requested, and that triggered the initial audit. I'm thinking it might be two thousand and seventeen, but it triggered an audit, and that's when we had like all of this issue. And we have performed a follow-up subsequent to that initial audit, and a lot of the recommendations from the initial audit were partially implemented. They weren't all fully implemented, but this is a second follow-up audit that was occurred in the third quarter, where we found that the status was fully implemented, but I cannot speak specifically, but I can, I can be happy to research that information and get back with you.
No, there's no problem. So just to give my understanding around it, so it's around data management, maybe transferring information on or off a system without like encrypted emails or whatever has to go on with PII within PGCPS. So, okay, I understand, and this is the audit that yielded the mitigation strategies or the mitigating strategies of how we are dealing with that now. Whoops, my camera just turned off, but it's all right. You can still hear me. And the second, the second question I have for you quickly is, so when we, when we perform these audits, do we have audits performed or property assessments performed that deal with the security features built into a school? With everything happening kind of across the country, I just, I'm thinking, are there, are there things we look into as far as like diagnostics on alarm systems or sensors on the building? Or, you know, checking to make sure doors locked properly and things like that. I'm just, I guess the top level question, does that happen in audits or, or property assessments? And then from there, I can kind of go from there.
The property assessment that we do, they're more like property inventory, and that's where we review the electronic like computers, iPads and stuff like that. We check the more electronic information equipment to make sure that those are, are still available, and they're, where they're supposed to be located, we ensure that, and I think we also work with the accounting department where we help to provide them with information to update their records. Accomplished in a financial reporting and IT.
Right, okay, so yeah, I would just make sure my understanding of it was, was correct. Now that, that helps to answer my question. So thank you. Any other questions from colleagues? All right, thank you for your report, and I'm gonna try to get my camera back on in a few minutes, but we'll, we'll keep moving along here. So next we have three point two. We're doing the budget moment, so over to you, Mr. Harrisman, for budget moment, the twenty twenty three budget review budget.
Thank you, Chair Harris. So since our last BAFFA committee meeting, the county council adopted its budget on June first. We could go today, and late last night, the states had updated allocation projections for our revenue, though those are not expected to be final until around June seventeenth. The new numbers are generally very close to the projections that we had, and will lead to a relatively small budget reconciliation as of now. Based on the new revenue figures that we got from the county and state, we're out of balance on the unrestricted general fund by about three hundred sixty seven thousand dollars. This amount will be covered through a prepayment in the current year, which is included in the financial review coming to the full Board of Education in tomorrow night's meeting. There are a couple of more minor reconciling items needed, including increasing the grant funded amounts for pre-K and college and career readiness in alignment with some new numbers we received from the state that look like some slight increases. But for those, as they're restricted grants, the required expenditures will offset the additional revenue. One final important note as we come to a close on this budget cycle, the negotiated agreements for that cover FY twenty three, the upcoming year with the two largest labor partners, PGCA and twenty two fifty, are not yet finalized and ratified, so the resulting negotiated agreements that we have left dictate the salary approximately eighty six percent of our employees for the upcoming year. That is really because most of our budget is salary. That's over seventy five, or seventy percent of our overall operating budget that is not yet finalized and confirmed. So following these ratifications, which we're hoping will come very soon to the Board of Education, there may be a need for some additional reconciliation to finalize or amend the FY twenty twenty three budget in accordance with everything that's included in those negotiated agreements, including the salary increases. And with that, yield back to Chair Harris.
Great. Thank you for the updates, colleagues. Any comments or questions dealing with the budget or reconciliation, which we're, you said we will discuss at the, the larger board meeting?
Specifically, I was discussing the, the tomorrow, during the budget consent, I believe there is a financial review item that includes a prepayment of a lease purchase, and that's how we intend to close that three hundred sixty seven thousand dollar budget deficit that we have right now after the final revenue numbers. In terms of the larger reconciliation, we'll have to bring something additional to the Board of Education with recommendations of, of, you know, closing that and adding in the money for those two grants as board will be passing the budget. And then if there is anything additional that comes out of the negotiations with the unions outside of what we've already budgeted for, there might need to be additional reconciliation then. And that would, of course, come to the Board of Education.
Okay.
Sorry, did that, did that answer your question?
It, it did. It, it answered the question. I remember the last time we spoke, there was a line item that Dr. Miller and former Boozer Struthers brought up that I think we'll discuss in the larger meeting.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. The, it's, it was a line item, I believe, for interpreters.
Yeah, so I was just making sure. Sorry, I was checking my email quickly to make sure that was still being handled in that. Okay, sorry.
Yes, and I called out a few of the larger items. There's a couple of those, maybe two or three lines of the more minor reconciling items that will have to get into the final budget, and that's included in there.
Yeah, sorry, updating my notes. All right, colleagues, any questions for Mr. Harris? Correct, seeing none. All right, so we'll move on to three point three, jumping into the CIP moment. The EFMP will come back to the committee to approve his recommendations to the full board at the June twenty third, June twenty third board meeting. I'll now yield the floor to Dr. Fawcett, our Chief Operating Officer, to present the CIP moment. Over to you, Dr. Fawcett.
Okay, good evening, Board Member Harris and the other board members who are attending. I think we began this last meeting, and I think we presented it to OBFA. Just to bring everybody up to speed in alignment with the state of Maryland, I see in the PSCP guidelines, each local agency every year must annually submit a revised or amended educational facilities master plan by July first of each year. We plan on submitting, and we have submitted the updates and amendments to our EFMP to the board for first reader, I believe, tomorrow. And we will hold a public hearing in between, and then we will come back on the last board meeting and it'll go for a second reader and vote. And I think last meeting, Board Member Harris, you asked for us to give time for Board Member Fraser, I believe, to, to, to look over, to make sure that there were any questions. Unfortunately, Mr. Matlock could not be here tonight. So I will, I will do my best if there any questions or concerns in reference to the EFMP. For you, Madam Fraser, and any other board members, if you have questions. But this is on the agenda for tomorrow night, as first reader.
Board Member Fraser, any questions?
No, I, I went over the materials and I had no questions. It was pretty clear. And the conversation that I had previously heard, so I'm, I'm ready to move forward with, with our process.
Okay, sounds good. Any other discussion from my other colleagues involved the EFMP, just for my own notes, Dr. Fawcett, you said first reader, and then second reader at the, at the June twenty third meeting?
Yes, we were, we're to be planning on, I believe it was the May twenty sixth, one of the meetings was canceled, so we have to, I'm sorry about that.
That's fine.
Yes, so that's why we moved it. We typically had about a month in between, but this, you know, this is a force of our hand because we have to submit it by July first. And we, we have, we have minor dates, so, you know, our EFMP was set years ago, that, that's the, the plan we follow in terms of our construction plan, cycle one, cycle two, cycle three. Cycle one, cycle two, cycle three, of course, with the alternative plan. All that is part of our education facility master plan, but you know, due to, you know, changes and priorities and different things, we make slight amendments every year.
Okay, sounds good. And so if my colleagues are ready, I think we can, I'd like to. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the EFMP recommendations and move it along to the full board.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I will second that. All in, all in favor? Any opposition? All right. Thank you, Dr. Fawcett, I think. Yep, I think I'm good. Yep, thanks, Dr. Fawcett. And moving on to three point four, the CEO's operating budget amendment process proposals. So colleagues, last time we spoke, this is, last time we spoke, it was regarding the proposal presented presented to us by. Mr. Herb Smith. And so today, if everyone again is ready and doesn't have any questions, I'd like to make a make a motion to. Propose the recommendations proposed by Mr. Herb Smith and his team to the full board for consideration. And this will be concerning the budget amendment proposal process to put some solid dates in line. To to try to structure our amendment process and and take the last few cycles of learning experiences moving forward.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. I'll second that, yeah. I'll second that. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, so that passes. Okay, moving right along, another thing that we discussed that last, at the last meeting and we pushed it, pushed to this meeting is. Our continued discussion regarding the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three OBFA committee work plan. Hopefully everyone had a chance to review it, you know, feel free to open the floor to discussion now if anyone has questions about it. Otherwise, we are planning on voting on that tonight. So I'll open the floor for discussion on the work plan. All right, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to. Um, approve the OBFA twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three committee work plan.
I'm to approve.
Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, oh, no opposition because it's just, just us three. All right, so that passes. Um, let's see, all right, sorry, making my notes while I do this, guys. Okay, so we have come again to the end of our agenda. So next is follow ups and next steps. There's no follow ups from our May eighteenth meeting and like we said, we had that one meeting canceled to celebrate all of our graduates this year. Again, congratulations to all of them. Um, and next we'll be doing next steps. So next step is the OBFA committee meeting on June fifteenth, twenty twenty two at five PM. Again, we do have the full board meeting tomorrow evening at seven PM. We will be discussing some of those budgets and reconciliation and and the other matters that we just voted up in this OBFA committee meeting. So with that, I'd like to open the floor for last thoughts from my colleagues and then if not, I will take a motion to adjourn. All righty, so I'll make a motion to adjourn here. Nothing for colleagues, so motion to. Second. All right, sounds good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? All right, have a good night, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.